The Salem City Council will hold its regular meeting in person on Thursday, March 23, 2023, at 7:00 PM for the purpose of transacting any and all business. Notice of this meeting was posted on March 21, 2023, at 12:55 PM. This meeting is being recorded and is live on SATV. Counselors absent, Counselor Watsonfelt, Council President Stott presided. Counselor Presniewski moved to dispense with the reading of the record of the previous meeting. All those in favor? Matter carries. I now request that everyone please rise to recite the Pledge of Allegiance led by Counselor Varela. Public testimony. We now come to the public testimony portion of the regular meeting. Public testimony in totality is not to exceed 15 minutes. It's not a public hearing or a question-and-answer period. The signups for public testimony must occur 30 minutes prior to the meeting, can be done online or via a roster in the clerk's office. Signing up by email or phone will no longer be accepted. We do have two members of the public that have signed up for public testimony this evening. One member we have in chambers here, so Mr. Kapantus, if you'd like to make your way to the podium and state your name and address for the record along with your public testimony or public comment.
Good evening, Steve Kapantus, 23, West Area Street, Salem, Mass. I want to talk briefly about the importance of public testimony and then follow up on another issue that's not on the agenda. So, public testimony is important. If you don't think it's important, let's go back five or six months ago when this board brought in an ordinance that was unconstitutional. I firmly believe if not for public testimony, that would have passed. It passed 11-0 on first passage. It wasn't until public testimony that it was sent back and then it had to go through two or three more iterations until that ordinance was effective and constitutional. Public testimony is important. Second, that ordinance was the gun ordinance. Part of that, and I listened to all of you speak there about how important this ordinance was for public safety. Many of us made many comments. You voted on it. We also discussed the importance of signage. It's kind of like passing parking. If the street's no parking, if there are any signs, how do you enforce it? It's been six months, all of 11 years, who voted for this. Did you just vote for it and throw it into the silo across the street? Say, "No need for me to do any follow-up"? I see new signs on the front of City Hall that post the hours and how we're the second oldest. Where are the signs that you people took the time to pontificate about how important this was? So, here's my question for you. I don't expect an answer until the next meeting. Who's going to step up to the plate and make sure that those signs of this important ordinance are put in place on the buildings where you've put the weapon and ordinance? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And second, we have a Mr. Whitaker that has signed up for public comments. I don't see him in chambers, so if you are joining us remotely, please raise your hand. Nope. Okay, we don't see you, so we need to move on. Oh, holding. Okay. If you just joined us via phone and you are Justin Whitaker, who has signed up for public comment this evening, please use your raise-hand function and we will allow you to speak. I believe it's *9 on the phone. Okay, number ending in 398, we're going to allow you to talk. If this is Mr. Whitaker, please state your name and address for the record and your public comments.
Hello, Justin Whitaker, Ten River Street.
Thank you, we can hear you.
Okay. So, I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Federal Street Neighborhood Association, and I'm objecting to the proposal to provide resident parking stickers to 27 North Street. This is on page 14 of tonight's agenda. Ordinance relative to traffic for Federal Street, Section 4. I know that you will sympathize as a council with the situations for the residents of 27 North. We sympathize with them. But this situation is entirely of the making of the developer and the ZBA. Everyone, including the residents of 27 North Street, went into this situation with their eyes open. There was no mystery about the lack of parking in 2018 when the developer sought and the ZBA approved the conversion of the first-floor office to two additional resident units, making for a total of six. There were then and still are only four parking spaces on the property. Those four spaces were completely inadequate for the previous four units, and the additional units made the situation worse. Again, everyone went in with their eyes open. In fact, the ZBA decision cites finding number two, and I quote,[398.83][399.13]"Traffic flow and safety, including parking, unloading, is adequate." The ZBA found that the parking was adequate as is. Federal Street Neighborhood, especially at this end, already struggles with parking. This would allow six new cars to add to that struggle. The residents of the neighborhood should not be made to bear the burden for the decisions of the developer and the ZBA. This isn't just a one-off. Across North Street, developers have consistently been able to add more units than parking can accommodate. So, our neighborhood has already seen excess vehicles coming across North Street to park on Federal Street. And I know that there will be some changes made to create some more resident sticker parking on that side of North Street. But from what I've seen of that, that's very limited. And that, if anything, may help to alleviate the demand that already exists, but this would add increased demand on top of that. So, I hope that you will, at very least, refer this to committee to explore it more. But failing that, we would ask that you do not vote to allow these resident parking stickers for 27 North. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker, for your comments this evening. And that is all we have for public comments tonight. Moving on to hearings.
We have held from the last meeting an order from National Grid to install one poll on Bridge Street, which is poll number 598.
Thank you. As this is a public hearing, I will still see if there's anyone appearing in favor for the poll on Bridge Street. If you are joining us via Zoom, please use the raise-hand function. If you are appearing in opposition for the poll on Bridge Street via Zoom, please use the raise-hand function. Counselor Marsillo?
Thank you, President. Because there's still questions about this poll that have not been answered, we are going to keep this open and continue it to the next meeting.
Thank you. I'll just add, we have been speaking with National Grid, which is why Speed is not here this evening. Told her it wasn't worth her time because we are still working out the details. So, Counselor Marsillo moves to keep the public hearing open until our next meeting, which has a long list of public hearings, of April 13. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of keeping the public hearing open until April 13? Anyone opposed? We keep the public hearing open until the next meeting on April 13. Appointments and reappointments.
We held from the last meeting the mayor's appointment of Hannah Gathman to serve on the City of Salem Public Arts Commission with the term to expire on March 9, 2024.
Counselor Hapworth?
Thank you, President Stott, and I move for confirmation by roll call vote.
Counselor Hapworth moves for confirmation by roll call vote, under discussion.
Thank you, President Stott. Ms. Gathman has an impressive resume and a strong background in the arts. I just want to thank her for her willingness to serve.
Any further comments or discussion? On Counselor Hapworth's motion for confirmation by roll call vote, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Presniewski?
Yes.
Counselor Marsillo?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
And Counselor Stott?
Yes.
On the mayor's appointment of Hannah Rathman to the Public Arts Committee, we have nine members voting, one absent, nine in the affirmative, matter carries. Counselor Hapworth?
Thank you, President Stott. I'd like to suspend the rules to allow Ms. Gathman to address the council if she so chooses.
Thank you. Ms. Gathman?
Thank you, Counselor Hapworth, and my next-door neighbor, and thank you all for the appointment. I'm really excited to start serving on the Public Arts Commission. I've known Julie Berry a bit professionally for the past year or so. Excited to work with her, really impressed with her work for the City of Salem. I'm a new resident as of August 2022. Excited to be here. Use my background, which is in arts administration and public policy and planning. I'm currently an arts and culture planner for the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, serving greater Boston region, including working with Salem right now on Charlotte Fortin Park down on Derby Street. Excited to be here. Thank you for the appointment.
Thank you very much. Further appointments and reappointments.
We have held from the last meeting the mayor's appointment of Kristin Lindberg to serve as the City of Salem's treasurer with a term to expire on January 31, 2025.
Counselor Presniewski?
Thank you, President Stott. I move that Ms. Lindberg's appointment be moved by confirmation by roll call vote.
Counselor Presniewski moves for confirmation by roll call vote, under discussion.
Thank you. Ms. Lindberg comes to the City of Salem as an accomplished public finance leader with experience in municipal budgeting and municipal treasurer collection operations. She has served as an Assistant Chief Financial Officer for the last 11 years, as well as the Assistant Treasurer and Collector within the City of Gloucester. And I welcome Ms. Lindberg to Salem, wish her a long and happy career, and I would request that we suspend the rules to allow Ms. Lindberg to speak.
Any further discussion? So, on the motion for the mayor's appointment of Kristin Lindberg to serve as the City of Salem's treasurer with a term to expire on January 31, 2025, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Presniewski?
Yes.
Counselor Marsillo?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
And Counselor Stott?
Yes.
Thank you. On the mayor's appointment of Kristin Lindberg as the City of Salem's treasurer, we have nine members voting, nine in the affirmative, one absent, matter carries. And Counselor Presniewski moves to suspend the rules. If Ms. Lindberg would like to address the council, please make your way up to the podium. Thank you.
Hello. I just want to thank Mayor Bob for his recommendation for my position as Salem City Treasurer, and I would like to thank the council for their confirmation as well. It'll be an honor and a pleasure to serve with all, for all of you.
Thank you, and welcome. Glad you could make it over the bridge down here. Counselor Marsillo?
Thank you, President. I move that we go out of order to page 21.
Counselor Marsillo moves that we go to petitions, page 21, out of order. Any objection? Okay.
And it's the bottom.
Yep, so bottom of page 21, petitions for Salem Main Streets.
We have a request from Salem Main Streets to close Front Street as well as Essex Street, from New Liberty Street to Hawthorne Boulevard to vehicular traffic to hold the Salem Arts Festival on June 3 and June 4, 2023, from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Counselor Marsillo.
I move that this be granted.
Counselor Marsillo moves that this be granted, under discussion.
Thank you, President. Yay. It's nice to see the Arts Festival again because that means summer is coming, so yay, double yay. So, this is just the closing of the streets for the festival.
Thank you. Any further discussion, comments, questions for Ms. Sullivan that we do have in the audience tonight? Counselor McLean?
I'll second that, yay. This is my favorite event in Salem every year. I absolutely love the Arts Fest. I'm psyched to see it coming back.
Thank you. I will also continue the yay from up here. I just attended the Salem Main Streets Annual Meeting last week. One day this week?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, they all blur together. And just the amount of work and effort that you put in and your love towards the city that really makes this quite a vibrant, exciting city. And although we have events year-round, I do feel like this is the true kickoff to summer, and I'm very excited. And just to confirm that this is closing Front Street as well as Essex from New Liberty to Hawthorne Boulevard. Any further comments or questions? On Counselor Marsillo's motion that this matter be granted, all those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Thank you for joining. Counselor Marsillo?
Thank you, President. I move that we return to the regular order on page 5.
Thank you. Moving back to page 5, communications from the mayor.
We have been ordered that the sum of $77,329.19 be approved within the Retirement Stabilization Fund Vacation Sick Leave Buyback Account to be expended for the contractual buybacks for four school employees.
Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Counsel President. I move for suspension of the rules.
Counselor McLean moves for suspension of the rules, seeing no objection. Counselor McLean?
Thank you. I further move for adoption.
Counselor McLean moves for adoption for first passage.
Sorry, that's a, that's a, that's a, on my part.
Under discussion?
For adoption.
Thank you, Counsel President. Once again, we have some school department employees who are ending their tenures with the Salem schools, and so we'll be paying them for their sick and vacation as usual, and we thank them for all of their service. And actually, this was a sort of fun package to read through because it really shows you the range of people who contribute to our school system. We have everybody from teachers to the folks who are helping to keep our schools neat and clean. So, just goes to show how many people it takes to really get the job done. So, with gratitude, I move for adoption.
Thank you, yes, I agree. And some long-term employees in there as well. Any further comments or questions? On Counselor McLean's motion for adoption for first passage that the sum of...
Just adoption, that was my edit.
Oh, okay, thank you. There doesn't need to be a second. Yes. Sorry, so on Counselor McLean's motion for adoption that the sum of $77,329.19 be approved within the Retirement Stabilization Fund Vacation Sick Leave Buyback Account? All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further communications from the mayor?
We have been ordered that the sum of, sorry, $73,175 is hereby appropriated in the Retirement Stabilization Fund Vacation Sick Leave Buyback Account to be expended for the sick leave buybacks to be paid out for active employees pursuant to collective bargaining agreements with various unions.
Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Counsel President. I move for suspension of the rules.
Counselor McLean moves for suspension of the rules, seeing no objection. Counselor McLean?
I further move for adoption.
Counselor McLean moves for adoption, under discussion.
Thank you. At nearly every meeting, we are working our way through compliance with our collective bargaining agreements, and so we have a number of people who need to be paid out, and we will pay them.
Any further comments or questions? On Counselor McLean's motion for adoption that the sum of $73,175 is hereby, or be appropriated to the Retirement Stabilization Fund Vacation Sick Leave Buyback Account? All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further communications from the mayor?
We have been ordered to accept the donation of $1,200 from Helen Abraham. The donation is to be deposited into the Parks and Rec Donation Fund for a standing Cardinal bench.
Counselor McLean?
Thank you. I move for adoption.
Counselor McLean moves for adoption, under discussion.
Thank you, Helen Abraham.
Any further discussion? On the motion to accept the donation of $1,200 from Helen Abraham? All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Thank you, Ms. Abraham. Further communications from the mayor?
We have been ordered to accept the donation of $1,200 from Marion Rudolph. The donation is to be deposited into the Parks and Rec Donation Fund for a standing Cardinal bench.
Counselor McLean?
I move for adoption.
Counselor McLean moves for adoption, under discussion.
Thank you, Marion Rudolph.
Any further comments? On the motion to accept the donation of $1,200 from Marion Rudolph? All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Thank you, Marion. Further communications from the mayor?
We have been ordered to accept the donation of $1,000 from Giovanni Alabiso. The donation is to be deposited into the Planning Donation Fund to commission a bronze statue of Charlotte Fortune to be installed at 289 Derby Street.
Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Counsel President. I move for adoption.
Counselor McLean moves for adoption, any discussion?
Just another thank you to Giovanni Alabiso, and it's been fun to watch this space evolve over time.
Great, and now we have a new member of our Public Arts Commission heavily involved in the design of it as well. Any further comments or questions? On Counselor McLean's motion to accept the donation of $1,000 from Giovanni Alabisi, Alabiso? All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further communications from the mayor?
We have a resolution for the 2023 Motorcycle Safety Awareness Period.
Counselor Presniewski?
Thank you, President Stott. Whereas the motorcycle is a popular means of transportation for commuting as well as for touring and recreation, and where there is a growing need for cooperation among drivers of automobiles, trucks, motorcycles, bicyclists, pedestrians who use our streets and highways to reduce accidents, injuries, and fatalities, and whereas it is critical for all Massachusetts citizens to increase their knowledge of the rules of the roads and the right to the responsibilities of all roadway users, and whereas over 650 motorcycles are owned and operated by our fellow bikers, homeowners, and residents in Salem, and the tens of thousands more that visit and tour our historic city from neighboring communities and from the entire country and from overseas, and whereas numerous departments and organizations are committed to making our streets and highways safe for all motor vehicles related to transportation, urging and reminding drivers to check twice, save a life. Motorcycles are everywhere. Check twice when pulling out or backing out of parking spaces. Check twice when making a left turn. Check twice when changing traffic lanes. Check twice for our fellow citizen bikers of Salem and visitors to our city on motorcycles. Now, therefore, Robert K. McCarthy, as Acting Mayor of the City of Salem, hereby joins the Governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and all agencies and organizations to hereby proclaim March 25 to April 30, 2023, to be our Motorcycle Safety Awareness Period here in the City of Salem, and wish all who ride an enjoyable and safe riding season. And I ask that this letter be adopted and filed.
Counselor Presniewski moves that the resolution be adopted by roll call vote, under discussion.
Thank you, President Stott. I had the privilege of being a motorcycle officer for many years in the City of Salem, and I understand the differences between riding on a motorcycle and riding in a motor vehicle. And I think it is of particular importance that people who are behind the wheel of a car do exactly as written in the order here, and that's be aware that there could be motorcycles on either side of them at any time of the day, day of the night. And remember, when you get into an accident with a car, you're wearing a seatbelt. You get in an accident when you're on a motorcycle, it's a lot different. So, urging people just to be more aware and more careful, and for the riders of motorcycles to be respectful of people in motor vehicles also, and follow the rules of the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or discussion? Comments from the council? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Presniewski?
Yes.
Counselor Marsillo?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
And Counselor Stott?
Yes.
Thank you. On the 2023 Resolution for Motorcycle Safety Awareness Period, nine members voting, nine in the affirmative, one absent, matter carries. Mayor's informational page.
We have the following letter from the mayor regarding that the city has been awarded by the Mass DOT a set of combination radar feedback equipment and school zone speed limit sign assemblies.
Thank you. Counselor Presniewski?
Thank you. President Stott is Salem? I'm sorry, thank you, President Stott. I am in council and city chambers this date. Ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, Acting Mayor McCarthy is pleased to report through David Kuchowski, Director of Traffic and Parking, that the City of Salem has been awarded a set of combination radar feedback equipment and school zone speed limit sign assemblies. These speed limit sign assemblies, I'm sorry, this memorandum of understanding was signed on Tuesday, March 21, 2023, and will follow next steps with the legal department to ensure all matters are finalized appropriately. The Massachusetts Department of Transportation indicates that the speed calming assemblies are offered in response to an increase in speed-related traffic deaths and injuries in Massachusetts, as well as a recent revision to the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices that now defines school zones to include grades 9 through 12. Up to 15 municipalities were chosen, including Salem, to receive two assemblies to support one school zone area, with awardees selected based on need, context, environment, risks, and crash history. For any follow-up questions, please follow up with David Kuchowski, Director of Traffic and Parking. Sincerely, Acting Mayor, Robert K. McCarthy. And I move that this letter be received and filed.
Counselor Presniewski moves that this be received and filed, under discussion. Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, President Stott. Super excited, I'll do a yay on this. One of the most dangerous school crosswalks, if not the most, in Salem is at the Salt Stall. One reason that we chose that to be one of the rainbow crossings. It's one of the only crosswalks that doesn't have a signal at this time, and people really fly through it. I do want to really give a shout-out to Counselor Hapworth, who is like the master of time and space on managing people doing this. He came all the way to Ward 5 and managed a group of 18 people. It was really spectacular. And I've been working with a group of eighth graders at the Salt Stall about a game plan on how to make that stretch of road a little safer for everyone, including the students. So, I'm really excited that one of these is going to be at that crosswalk. Thank you.
Any further discussion? On the motion that this be received and filed? All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Mayor's informational page.
The following letter and information from the mayor relative to the Salem High School's after-prom party, and as Counsel Stott pointed out, the email address on Donna Fritz and.com, C-O-M-B-O-S. There was an error there.
Her last name. Yeah, sorry, I might have had my error in correcting the error. Donna's correct email is her last name, Donna F-R-I-T-Z 44, just for clarity. Counselor Marsillo?
Thank you, President. I will read through this because this is actually a really important event in Salem. Ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, as tradition has dictated in previous years, we are sharing information relative to the Salem High School's senior program with the 20th after-prom party returning after a three-year disruption. As shared by Principal Glenn Burns to the mayor's office, the Salem High School post-prom party is asking those who can contribute to please contact Donna Fritz after... After-Prom Committee Chair, at 978-828-5673, or donnafritz44@gmail.com. Additionally, there is an official GoFundMe page which features the following language. For Prom Night, parents in our community are organizing an After-Prom Party for Salem High School students and guests. The After-Prom Party will provide students with a chaperoned event that offers fun activities, great prizes, and entertainment in an environment free from drugs and alcohol. This After-Prom Party is organized by parents and guardians. To make this event possible, we are looking for your support. By donating today, you will help cover the cost of busing 250 students from the prom to the after-prom and back to the high school. Thank you in advance for your contribution. This will go a long way in making sure the class of 2023 has a night to remember on Prom Night. And then within this letter is a link to the GoFundMe page. And please, we're asking that the word "get out" to help them raise the funds. And I move that this be received and filed.
Counselor Marsillo moves that this be received and filed. Any further discussion?
Thank you President. So as I said, this is probably one of the most important events that happens at the school after the prom. I'm sure that Counselor Prozinski can tell us all sorts of horror stories about bad accidents that happen after prom. This has been going on for a long time. Giving the kids something to do after the prom when they're wide awake and wired. This is also something that I've never had to chaperone, thank goodness. My husband did, so. But it takes a lot of chaperones on that night. It takes a lot of volunteers to coordinate it. They have really great activities for the kids, but they really do need help with the funding for it. And I encourage everyone to donate just a little bit. Thank you.
Any further comments? On the motion that this be received and filed? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries? Motions, orders, and resolutions? Counselor Marsillo?
Thank you President. So I'm going to ask that we split these up, and the first one will be the first two traffic ordinances. And I will read through those because they're pretty simple. In the year 2023, an ordinance to amend an ordinance relative to traffic, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salem, as follows. Section 1, Chapter 42, Section 50B, Handicapped Zone Limited Time is hereby amended by repealing the following. Repeal Summer Street, Easterly Side, beginning 55 feet north of Endicott Street and running in a northerly direction for 20 feet. Handicapped Parking Limited Time Tow Zone. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by city charter. And the second one is, in the year 2023, an ordinance to amend an ordinance relative to traffic, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salem, as follows. Section 1, Chapter 42, Section 50B, Handicapped Zone Limited Time is hereby amended by adding the following. Summer Street in front of Number 73 for a distance of 20 feet. Handicapped Parking Limited Time Tow Zone. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by city charter. And I move for adoption for first passage.
Thank you. Counselor Marsillo moves for adoption for first passage. Under discussion?
Thank you President. So this is a swap. So the existing handicapped parking spot is in front of the house next door. That resident has since moved, and but next door, someone moved in and they do require a handicap spot.
Any further discussion? On the motion for adoption for first passage for the Handicapped Zone repeal on Summer Street and the new Handicapped Zone on Summer Street? Could do a hand vote, right? All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries? Further motions, orders, and resolutions? Counselor Marsillo?
Thank you President. This is just the Broad Street one. In the year 2023, an ordinance relative to traffic, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salem, as follows. Section 1, Section 51 of Article 5, be amended by repealing the following. Broad Street Parking prohibited on certain streets, Northerly Side, beginning at Pickering Street in an easterly direction for 30 feet. And inserting the following. Broad Street Parking prohibited on certain streets, Northerly Side, beginning at Pickering Street in an easterly direction for 102 feet. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by city charter. And I move for adoption for first passage.
Counselor Marsillo moves for adoption for first passage. Under discussion?
Thank you President. So this came out of the Broad Street Traffic Calming Design. And though we're pausing most of the design, when Counselor Watsonfeld and I met with the residents on Broad Street and walked the whole section, this intersection was pointed out as a problem. And the problem is that when cars are parked along the side of the street where the Pickering House is, cars pulling out of Pickering Street can't see, and so they inch out, they keep creeping out. And it's because the road rises at that intersection. It goes up a little hill. So by pushing the parked cars back a little bit, it will open up visibility more at that intersection, and hopefully we won't have as many near misses as we do.
Thank you. Any discussion from the council? On Counselor Marsillo's motion for adoption for first passage for the Broad Street Parking Restriction Changes? All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries? Further motions, orders, and resolutions? Counselor Marsillo?
Thank you President. This next one is just for the Essex Street. In the year 2023, an ordinance relative to traffic, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salem, as follows. Section 1, Section 51B, an article of Article 5, be amended by repealing the following. Essex Street Parking prohibited at certain times on certain streets for a distance of 135 feet in a westerly direction, beginning 95 feet from Summer Street, Southerly Side. 30-minute parking, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And Essex Street Parking prohibited at certain times on certain streets for a distance of 135 feet in a westerly direction, beginning 95 feet from Summer Street, Southerly Side. 30-minute parking, 8 o'clock a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Section 2, Section 56 of Article 5, be amended by repealing the following. Essex Street Parking Meter Zones Established, Northerly Side from North Street in a westerly direction to a point opposite the Easterly Side of Cambridge Street, 4-hour parking. Section 3, Section 75 of Article 5A, be amended by inserting the following. Essex Street Parking Prohibitions, Towing Zone Resident Sticker, Zone C, Color Green, Both Sides Beginning at Summer Street and Continuing in a westerly direction to Cambridge Street. 2-hour non-resident parking allowed. Monday through Sunday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. No visitor passes shall be issued for qualifying addresses on this street. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by city charter. And I move for adoption for first passage.
Counselor Marsillo moves for adoption for first passage. Under discussion?
Thank you President. So this and the rest of the massive traffic amendments are because, well, one thing, there are so many of them because when Mr. Kucharsky went in to amend some of them, he's also cleaning up old stuff that's still on the books that doesn't make sense anymore and hasn't been used. But overall, between Essex Street and Federal Street, the overall story is that where there used to be some businesses along those sections of the street, there's now residences. And so with residences comes cars. And so in this particular instance on Essex Street, it's a very small section from Summer Street to, what was the name of that street? Cambridge Street. And on both sides, and they just want to make resident-only parking there. And it was approved by Lieutenant Tucker in conversation with Mr. Kucharsky and the Ward Two Counselor.
Counselor Dominguez?
Thank you President Stott for my own clarification and for the clarification of the general public. We hear comments on public hearings, public comments on the Federal Street Neighborhood Association. We were opposed to some type of change in. I just wanted to know, this is the one that was referred in the public testimony? Because if that is the case, I would like to hear more from the Neighborhood Association based on the fact that I think they're the one that really will deal with the consequence in either way, positive or negative, in any change that we made. So my question to the good Counselor Ward Three is that this is need to be passed right now? I'd rather see more discussion, make sure that we're in tune with the Neighborhood Association or with the residents or that area in terms of we can make a very formal decision based on the fact that sometime we made a change and we actually, after we made a change, we hear from residents who are not really supporting what's going on. So would you mind to answer that? Thank you.
Counselor Marsillo?
Thank you Madam President. So this is not what was being discussed in the public comment. This is Essex Street and this one little section. That's a Federal Street. That was a Federal Street issue. So this is completely separate.
Thank you.
And just for clarity, we're still continuing non-resident parking allowed at a 2-hour limit. So it's the way I understood it, we're essentially matching parking that the way it said on one side of the street will now be the same on both sides of the streets, which includes 2-hour non-resident parking.
Correct.
Thank you. Any further questions? On Counselor Marsillo's motion for adoption for first passage for the Essex Street Parking Prohibitions repeal and Parking Prohibitions insertion from Cambridge to Summer Street? All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries? Further motions, orders, and resolutions? Counselor Marsillo?
Thank you President. This is where I'll take a waiver of reading of all of this.
Waive the reading.
Thank you. So this is the several pages of Federal Street repeals and changes to resident parking and an addition of allowing one residence on North Street to get parking permits. This I would like to send to the OLA Committee. And with an invitation to Counselor Watsonfeld, since she's not on the committee, and to Mr. Kucharsky.
What? Do you want to co-post it?
Do we want to co-post it?
Counselor Varela would like? Okay. So Counselor Marsillo's motion is to move of the six items, the fifth item and the sixth item that we have in front of us tonight, which are both of the items that are related to Federal Street, like to move those to OLA. Under discussion? Any further discussion or questions on those? Counselor Marsillo?
Thank you President. So I am not the Ward Two Counselor. I'm standing in for her tonight and doing my best. But I think that the Federal Street one on both sides is a little bit more complicated and could use a good discussion and include the neighbors as well.
On Counselor Marsillo's motion to move the traffic amendments 5 and 6 related to Federal Street, to OLA, co-post it with Committee of the Whole? Okay. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries? My pages are all out of order. Okay. So we are now at the middle of page 16. Further motions, orders, and resolutions? Counselor Cohen?
Thank you President Stott. Section 1, Section 51B? Yeah.
Waive the reading.
Thank you so much, Counselor Marsillo. I'm going to be brief. This is, or as brief as I can be. I've had extensive meetings with Lieutenant Tucker and...
Make motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I move that this takes effect by city charter.
Counselor Cohen moves that this be adopted for first passage.
For first passage.
Under discussion?
Thank you so much. Times two, Counselor Marsillo. So I've had extensive conversations with residents, David Kucharsky, Lieutenant David Tucker. I'm just going to go over this real quickly. So the area on Lafayette Street where it intersects with Ocean on the east side, on the water side, in front of Salem State's Social Work Campus. As Counselor Marsillo said about some other stuff, David Kucharsky found that the language was in the wrong section of the ordinance. So this is being moved to the right section. In addition, there is no signage on that stretch of road, and that will be instituted per our passing this on second passage. Second of all, there's a stretch from Lafayette on Ocean Ave on the west side from Lafayette to the driveways of Andrew Michaels Salon and the Coach House Inn, where the signage will now be 1-hour parking to accommodate their customer base. And then the rest of that stretch, all the way to Canal Street, is going to reflect, the ordinance reflects the signs, but not the ordinance. And so the signs are what most of the residents and Traffic and Parking and the Police Department feel appropriate. So this will reflect that. And there is a small stretch from Lafayette Street on the east side of Ocean Ave where there is a small change to the resident and impartial, non-resident parking, and the signage will be instituted there.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Any further questions, comments from the council? Counselor Cohen?
I do have one other thing. So one of the issues is that there's a lot of spillover in that area from people who are visiting, whether they're college kids or other visitors, and they don't have resident parking, so they're parking on Linden Street and other streets in the area. And what the Traffic and Parking Department did, which they can do on any street in Salem, is they figured out how many resident passes exist and how many parking spots. So from that area where Andrew Michaels is, down to Canal Street on Ocean Ave, there is 84 passes and 124 spots. So the Traffic and Parking and Police Department feel like having it reflect the current signage will better accommodate the people who actually reside on the adjacent streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? On Counselor Cohen's motion for adoption for first passage for the changes along Lafayette and Ocean Ave? All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries? Further motions, orders, and resolutions? Counselor McLean?
Thank you President Stott. In the year 2023, an ordinance to amend an ordinance relative to traffic, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salem, as follows. Section 1, Chapter 42, Section 50B, Handicapped Zone Limited Time is hereby amended by adding the following. Albion Street in front of Number 33 for a distance of 20 feet. Handicapped Parking Limited Time Tow Zone. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by city charter. And I move for adoption for first passage.
Counselor McLean moves for adoption for first passage. Under discussion?
Thank you Council President. This is my actual street, not 50 yards away. And indeed, I do know this resident. They do have a handicapped parking placard, and parking does tend to be highly competitive on our street, let's say. There's a number of families living there who are in that very active phase of life where the adults and the children are both hosting, and so it can be a little tough. So I did have a conversation with Lieutenant Tucker about this. I'm in full support of it, and I hope it passes.
Any further comments, questions? Any further comments, questions on Councilor McLean's motion for adoption for first passage for the Albion Street handicap zone? All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Committee reports. Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Council President. City of Salem, March 23, 2023. I am offering the following report for the Committee on Administration and Finance, to whom was referred the matter of a bond order to redesignate $76,000 from FY 2021 CIP Electrical Riley Plaza to Electrical Smart Signal Project. The Committee has considered said matter and would recommend adoption, excuse me, would recommend approval of the redesignation of the money. And I move for acceptance of the report.
For second passage?
Excuse me, would recommend adoption for second passage. I'll start with acceptance of the report.
On acceptance of the report, all those in favor? Any opposed? On adoption of the recommendation, under discussion?
Thank you. So just to be clear, since we had a little back and forth there, the recommendation is that we adopt this for second passage. We did hear earlier from the city electrician, John Giardi, and we had some comments that were submitted via email from our finance director, and we were able to discuss a little bit what went on with the first project. We were informed that the initial bond order project for the installation of LED lighting was completed under budget, which is always a wonderful thing to hear. And so they are looking to transfer that money for the use of installation of smart signals adjacent to Riley Plaza. And these signals will allow for improved data collection in terms of vehicle and pedestrian throughput, as well as better management of the situation for pedestrians in particular, where it will involve better information as to how much time they actually have to cross the streets. And the ultimate intention is that this will connect with other smart signal project areas around the downtown area so that we can begin to get better data collection and movement of vehicles and people as a whole.
Thank you. Any discussion? Comments from the committee on Councilor McLean's motion for adoption for second passage of the bond order to redesignate $76,000 from fiscal year 2021 CIP Electrical Riley Plaza to Electrical Smart Signal Project? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilor Varela?
Yes.
Councilor Prazniewski?
Yes.
Councilor Marcelo?
Yes.
Councilor Merkel?
Yes.
Councilor McLean?
Yes.
Councilor Hapler?
Yes.
Councilor Dominguez?
Yes.
Councilor Cohen?
Yes.
And Councilor Stott?
Yes. Thank you. On the bond order, $76,000 from fiscal year 2021 CIP Electrical Riley Plaza to Electrical Smart Signal Project, second passage, nine members voting, nine in the affirmative, one absent. Matter carries. Further committee reports? Councilor Dominguez, would you?
Thank you.
I'll leave this here for you.
Further committee reports? Councilor Stott?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee of the Whole was referred the matter discussing City Council Rules and Orders, Section 26C, relative to public testimony during regular meetings, has considered said matter and would recommend that the council accept the edits submitted to the Committee of the Whole by the city solicitor to Section 26C, and that the matter also continue to remain in committee.
On the acceptance of the report, others in favor? Councilor Stott?
Thank you, Mr. President. So we had a good conversation this evening with the information that we had. There was a new ruling from the State Supreme Court around public comment at public meetings. So our city council meetings have a set of rules that we follow. We just recently reviewed all of them at the end of last year, kind of went through and did a refresh. And one of those rules is rules for testimony during the public testimony portion of our regular meetings. So this discussion topic was specific towards just like these meetings that we're having this evening and the public testimony portion that's posted in the agenda. This was not a discussion point around the other like public hearings or boards and commissions that also allow public to speak. These rules were specific to our council meetings. And there was a ruling recently in the state, I believe it was Southborough, case that ruled that the committee could not, or the council, I forget what the body was, limit the public comment, really in any sort of way, other than keeping it peaceful and orderly. So one of the items that we have in our public testimony rules is that public testimony during the council meetings must be limited to any items on the agenda. So obviously, that's a limitation that we feel pretty confident is now considered not lawful. We have additional items within our public testimony rules, Section 26C, such as the use of vulgar or profane language, personal attacks, political speech, et cetera, that we also think need to be removed. This matter was referred to committee so we could provide or get feedback from the city solicitor. This was kind of a very fast-moving item. I know all of the local municipalities and their solicitors were following it closely, as well as the clerks throughout the state. And even today, you know, there are various opinions and thoughts being put out there regarding this. So we want to at least move forward in regards to buttoning up our language and the items that we know are basically against that ruling. The city solicitor was going to speak with the Committee of the Whole last week. Unfortunately, there was a snow emergency, so we moved the meeting to tonight. And then unfortunately, tonight, which I knew the city solicitor was out of town this week, so she was unable to attend. We definitely still have questions on this, and want to maybe continue the conversation within the committee in the manner of the items as they become known and as we learn more and hear more opinions on what this means. But we want to at least follow through on the first set of edits to clean up our public testimony and public comment portion of the rules to know that put us at least in compliance with the new ruling that came out. So the actual order from the city solicitor that she wrote up for us, we all have a copy of, ordered that Appendix A, Rules and Orders of the City Council, Section 263, 26C, Rules for Public Testimony During Public Testimony Portion of Regular Meetings, is hereby amended by deleting the section in its entirety and replacing it with the following: Section 26C, Rules and Orders During Public Testimony Portion of Regular Meetings. The following rules shall be observed during the public testimony portion of regular meetings of the City Council. One, in order to manage public testimony in a reasonable amount of time, before opening the public testimony portion of the meeting, the president shall, depending on the number of speakers, set a time limit not to exceed three minutes, with which each individual presiding testimony must abide. The public testimony portion of the meeting shall not exceed 15 minutes, extended at the discretion of the president or to a time definitive by a majority vote of the council. Two, anyone wishing to present public testimony at a city council meeting must sign up online or sign a roster in the clerk's office up to 30 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. The roster should be presented to the president of the city council at the start of the regular meeting. Only those individuals whose names appear on the roster may present testimony at the meeting in question. Three, public testimony shall be conducted in an orderly and peaceable manner. Failure to do so may result in the president terminating the speaker's comment period, and for the public comment period is not a public hearing or a question-and-answer period. So that will be voted on tonight, our new Section 26C, Rules for Public Testimony During the Regular Meetings. In summation, it's pretty clear and short rules now. There's still the 15-minute public testimony portion that we have of the meeting. Speakers shall be limited to not to exceed three minutes. There's still the signup process, which again, I'd like to thank the city clerk for getting that up online, that there is an online roster that opens up on the Tuesday when the agenda is posted, and it's open until 30 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. We're still allowing public testimony in person or via Zoom. And it shall be conducted in an orderly and peaceable manner. And then the final comment, that the public comment period is not a public hearing or a question-and-answer period. It is quite difficult, I think, especially if we're not knowing what the topic is going to be, to really have any question-and-answer back and forth. But it is important to provide that platform for residents to provide public comment to us of whatever they so choose to. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? See none on the adoption of the recommendation by Councilor Stott for the report, the Committee of the Whole. Others in favor? Others opposed? Matter carries. Thank you.
We have a petition from Comcast to install a conduit on Majin Street.
Hearing ordered April 13, 2023. Further petitions?
We have a petition from National Grid in Verizon to install one joint rear-end pole on Grove Street.
Hearing ordered April 13, 2023. Further petitions?
We have a petition from National Grid to install a conduit on Grove Street.
Hearing ordered April 13, 2023. Further petitions?
And one more petition from National Grid to install a conduit on Osborne Hill Drive.
Hearing ordered April 13, 2023. Further petitions?
We will request for a hearing from On the Grind Cafe LLC at 36 Jefferson Ave to have extended hours from 5:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., seven days a week.
Hearing ordered for April 13, 2023. Further petitions?
We have petition from Lucy Sprague to discuss resident sticker parking procedure.
Councilor Marcelo?
I move that this be referred to the Committee on Ordnances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs.
Councilor Marcelo moves that this be referred to the Committee on Ordnances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs. Any discussion?
No discussion.
Any other discussion? On Councilor Marcelo's motion to refer the matter to the Committee on Ordnances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, all those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further petitions?
We have the following license applications of public guides, taxi operators, and vehicle-for-hire operators only.
Councilor Marcelo?
Thank you, President. I move that these be granted.
Councilor Marcelo moves that these be granted. Any discussion?
No discussion.
All those in favor of these licenses be granted? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further petitions?
We have two taxi operator license applications.
Councilor Marcelo?
Thank you, President. I move that these be denied.
Councilor Marcelo moves that these be denied. Any discussion?
No discussion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the licenses denied? Any opposed? Matter carries. Unfinished business?
There's another page.
Oh, nice skip.
Twenty-three?
Okay, sorry. Further petitions?
We have a request for a taxi operator hearing on the denial of a taxi operating license.
Councilor Marcelo?
Thank you, President. I move that this be referred to the Committee on Ordnances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs with a possible executive session.
Councilor Marcelo moves that this be referred to the Committee on Ordnances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, and executive session may be held. Any discussion?
No discussion.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further petitions?
We have a tag day license application.
Councilor Marcelo?
Thank you, President. I move that this be referred to the Committee on Ordnances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs.
Councilor Marcelo moves that the tag day application be referred to the Committee on Ordnances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs. All those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Further petitions?
We have two claims.
Councilor Marcelo?
Thank you, President. I move that these be referred to the Committee on Ordnances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs.
Councilor Marcelo moves that these claims be referred to the Committee on Ordnances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs. Any discussion?
No discussion.
All those in favor? Matter carries. Further petitions?
We have three joint labor contract operator licenses.
Councilor Marcelo?
Thank you, President. I move that these be granted.
Councilor Marcelo moves that these be granted. Any discussion?
No discussion.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Unfinished business?
We have a second passage of an ordinance to amend an ordinance relative to sustainability food containers and packaging.
Councilor Varela?
Thank you, President Stott. I move for adoption of second and final passage.
Councilor Varela moves for adoption for second and final passage on the ordinance to amend an ordinance relative to sustainable food containers and packaging. Any discussion?
No discussion.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Councilor Dominguez?
Thank you, President Stott. If there's anything else, let's have motions to adjourn.
Councilor Dominguez moves to adjourn. All those in favor? Thank you. We are adjourned.